That's called meeting order, Nancy.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you again on a Monday morning to conduct business for the people of Alphaba County. We ask that you just come and be with us and just fill this room with your Holy Spirit that we might make decisions that are pleasing to you and that are in your will. Guide us and protect us, protect our workers, and be with Jimmy's family. In Jesus Christ's name.
Amen. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't feel bad, Thomas, while people do that.
Yeah, even me once in a while.
Any public discussion on any item on the agenda. But do the men come in and we'll let these guys get out of here.
How many bids is there? There's only one bid? Rick, can we decide on that or not?
If you can get a vote, it looks like it's two.
You got your pick, stick, air guy, this is my last dough.
Little Caesar?
Yeah, there you go. Dan's got his. Well, they'll tape them up like you won't believe.
They're sealed bits for me.
They got their sealed bits.
It was in your office, and I found it dead, but it shot off for seven days, shut it off, something turned back on. Probably getting people stopping. Was your phone network? No, no. Yeah.
I love jerky. And that's true. My young son's at eat.
Always.
No. Fun stuff.
Hot with problems now, the air conditioner don't work. Everybody gets upset when the air conditioner don't work.
That could crush it.
Exactly. Part of getting pretty upset, electricity don't work. I'm sorry, but it stormed. He has his house complete.
That's our goal.
That's your job security.
I just go out with you guys, I'm in electricity, I just get to go get a grater, okay? We need to pull out of there.
With no rain and storms, whole winter, overtimes, I'm kind of scared.
Yeah, they're not getting much overtime. We're getting more going out.
I got tickled that day, Jason called me and he said, "Where you gonna let Christie out at?" And I said, "Reddy, I'm clear up north here." I didn't think I was in the right place. And I said, "Well, no, I even gave her the 911 address there." I said, "Just come there," and he said, "Well, I'll call Cuthbert and tell him to get somebody going out there." And I called Reddy and he said, "No, I got electricity now." So I called him back and he got Cuthbert, we're head dog. He said, "I should have known when they sent me up there, he probably..." Because I always tell him, "Now, remember, if we got electricity at the farm, everybody's got it because we're the only one off that line, you know, going west there."
Kevin Kerwin about died there, but Billy, I don't think that was a cough. I still carry a lot about that to me.
I move except a minute. A second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, let's jump down to open bids for a while, plan brush fire apparatus for Cherokee Rex in Alphaba County.
Where do you start?
Well, I can say, I would start.
Yes.
Cut away.
I'm gonna cut my hand off.
I'm gonna say.
This way, now we got to start. Much of what I got there.
Yeah, look. You cut through a little.
We're getting down there.
They have to take the bids back together.
I think we opened the whole, we opened the whole thing. Some of it's still in one piece.
Yeah, but.
Here's another pair of them. I'm gonna put this back away.
That came in.
The only bay is correct.
Right.
Blanket and it's for... Cost per, you need it all separate or you just want the total cost?
Total.
Total cost is $100,000.
Even?
Yeah, I read it.
Wow, that's the first time.
How many are you going to write?
I can't believe that this...
It was $104,432 and they gave you a $4,432 discount.
For $4,000, $100,000.
With the stuff I see, some supplies.
You guys want to look at this like you're the ones to get it.
Take a look at it and come back to you.
Go take a look at it, yeah.
They're Harper, aren't they?
You what?
Are they Harper?
Yeah. That rig, picture in the rig, it's similar to Burlington, you know.
They all one T, right? Two T's? Any spell, is it one T or two Ts on the name?
B-L-A-N-C-H-A-T.
You thought you spelled double N.
Mm-hmm.
I can never remember if it was one T or two Ts. I figured it'd be like $100,000 and two pennies.
There's, that one you have there, Jay, is separate, it's not a good market. From 1617, that one ended up all of one year.
They do a lot of work with that.
It's already, gift, name, and knowledge, right?
Correct.
Do the final payment on that. Services for the engineer for the MS link.
I got three road crossings, there's no charge.
It's one, did I not change? It's one.
I did, one's got those.
It's just one, not one.
You're being nice this week, though. I don't need the money this week.
Too much paperwork, no.
I was told they was gonna...
Which utility company is that?
I was told it was gonna... You know, two weeks, they'd show up on the county line, maybe county day, they'd have to show it up here.
Wild land boots. So if they come in with these high transmission lines, like they're talking, not agency, can they cut across people? Can they just cut across people without their permission?
Since their PSO power service, Oklahoma, or some public service Oklahoma.
Big eminent domain.
They can, eminent domain, you will come across, they still have to pay you a fair market value. See, I've been waiting for her mother to blow up.
There, there's a lot of people down there saying they're not going, they're not going to go across.
Well.
What I'm here, I don't...
It's like, just like if A.C., you say you're not coming, they can go, remember, they'll go.
Oh, yeah, they can take you.
Same thing as...
They'll probably look for alternative.
No, they won't.
They won't?
They'll look and look. I don't think they will. Maybe they might.
That's a trend I'm talking about.
Her mother's got a half mile of it.
That's what we were, we were talking about, Mac, in the middle of the hunting.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard her mother go nuts yet, I've seen Jan White.
No, mom is on the mile, but the half mile off there, she's a mile.
A mile and a half of it, yeah.
A mile and a half.
I don't know, would it be your mom or your brother that would...
Mom has, um...
Not even I get excited.
Throw a bid.
Yeah, mom has, um, what am I trying to say?
By time to stay spread. They want a 200 acre, 200 feet right away, this is 12 acres.
How much do you pay for it?
I haven't, I haven't heard no money. I've heard, well, people been guessing, but I haven't heard what they'll pay.
Somebody sold a north for almost $3,000 an acre.
Well, he stood at the farmer's, though, it's just a lease.
Wouldn't be too bad of a payment.
See, Gene's a roost, he has his ground in Gulfstream, not by Garfield, not by the county, six of them. And good, it's, not even, it's real good farmland. They didn't want them out there trespassing or surveying, well, they want the courtney laws, so... So you gotta, you gotta think about what it is anyhow. They'll need staging areas to stack that stuff in and everything else, because you've got, you've got four leg, you've got to put cement in the ground and all that.
Watch it here, here, come here, Cherokee Pogies come here.
I'm not sorry.
Well, that, look at that. Crap.
So far, Jan had, your mom Jan had said a word to me, and I've been waiting for it to land last week. Well, Dave was all excited about money, now he wasn't, but I guarantee when they offer enough money, Dave will take it.
I know, there's...
Don't put that in his hands.
Because they're coming anyway.
That's right, they're coming anyway.
I wonder if you can negotiate, say, you pay a fair market value, you negotiate, it might be like, hey, you're paying us $1,000.
They comes up for a week.
Well, you can, throw a bid, you won't have to... It's your land, you can negotiate it.
You won't have to go through the course to get the eminent domain, pay attorney.
Yeah, remember, making the park a lot, still, what, that one house, is the one left there? Yeah, it's, it takes a while. We haven't had blanket yet.
Yeah.
I don't know, but Trump was, pay attention, talk to Kyle. Probably could go over there, place she calls grandma's on the east side, they had a, narrow deals in the distance. Now, the old showed up about 200 yards north of that, a mile line, have you seen it? About right, I didn't tell you. Dude, every five miles, they got those. I didn't, I didn't go any farther past them than Alphaba County. And it might help the county, and I guess we're putting some kind of export tax, right? It's like I tell about the wet tire, we didn't grow it up in one tire jar all the time, one thing I think about it, we all we know is oil, oil, oil.
They probably hope they put them down there, then we know, they'll make, they'll make money off those. School district.
Well, hopefully, they're trying to take that away and take it down there.
Yeah, they always try to take the school money.
Yeah, ask the leader about Harper County.
What I did miss?
Then come back.
Toby in Charlotte, though.
They'll need it if that's, yeah. Third dog, Jay.
They decided it was too much money.
They want three of them.
Well, does anybody else in the county want to clean? Pick a bag, help that. Hey, they're done, you might as well go ahead, back to that and get them done.
Okay, I do that.
It's what we were after.
I move we stepped in bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Good looking out there.
Aye.
I guess I'm gonna be yelling. That's real similar to Burlington, isn't it?
Yeah, no.
That's a nice unit.
They are.
Really.
They've got quite the rollover structure, don't they?
Oh, they do.
One of the best in the industry.
Our rescue truck is the only mistake we made, we didn't put big enough engine in it, all that weight on it.
Yeah, they're good trucks.
It's equipped.
And they're built right up here, you can get parts for them, they'll work on.
That's right.
That's a lot of it.
They do quality work.
It's not that far away, no, and they'll, they'll come down here.
Yeah, they would make work well with this.
There's spots where these tabbies are.
Oh, yeah, we got, yeah.
Sign those. Sometimes you just need the initials, you don't need to sign, and then I'll get a copy of the P.O., I'll send it back with them and with all those papers.
26. Nine weeks out on that. I missed clout. Sure, I know, there you go.
They got, they got hit pretty hard for trucks after all, after the rain fired from that start.
I'm sure, probably have, yeah. I'm just glad somebody in this county had forefart, forethought, not fart, to, the old field tales, passive sale.
Witch cutter, Toby.
Oh, wait, might have been you, to pass those sales taxes.
Did you get forefarted?
We have tabs.
You have one?
No, there's several more tabs, not the, not the hard tabs, the little...
That's right, and where it's close, they're all built on their buildings. They got too small, Alien's gonna go out on bids for a building, right?
Yeah, that's it.
It's a nice cap.
They just want you to miss out.
I mean, we trust, we have to, push them out of the bar, let's get them, see if we can push them into straighter, jumpstart or whatever.
And this is the very bottom of that one?
And this will be foresight and vision.
Initial, get a lot of them here.
Do you guys have good, you know, good equipment in that house?
Oh, you got that.
And then they gather some more in the back, then.
You get done better for it, healthy. I like that rubber band, that'd be a good one.
It's a good one, isn't it?
You want to come down, help Jay down there, tell him on the sign? See, it only took a second.
Put back on the postscript.
Well, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't, I haven't looked into it, but I usually just have someone.
That one has to be different.
Yeah, when Jay got their bread, they wouldn't, Walt, let the regular wear and show it to them, I said, "Dang, Walt, let's go drive that thing around." I told them to drive it.
No, she'll suck. I'll memorize it mostly, all the stuff with them.
I hope we don't have, they like how we...
I'd have to go all out on them, is there a spot to sign or anything?
There's no way to fight that stuff, now we have...
We don't have canes, we don't have holdouts, because if you try to...
I don't know that.
I think they were on their front end, and I said, "Hey, we're..." But I apparently...
finer, didn't you work?
No, no, if there's not a spot to sign, I'll just go out the rest of them. They usually just want to know the P.O. number, when we, when our deadline is and all that stuff, and I'll send a copy of the P.O.
Just him as a sign or anybody else?
All right, Doug, you're fixed it.
All right, I'm set.
You're welcome today.
Thank you, guys.
You may.
Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Derek.
It's not, not hard to take care of firemen for me.
No, it's done.
Yeah, I see why you're sitting back there, sitting, we don't have to have anything else.
Wow.
Something left, so we never know where they're sleeping.
He's got his favorite spot. Nancy got by a pillow, you get there, you...
A little buckrow on the lawn, duck over the hill of the lawn.
Hey, $7.51 a transport, didn't it?
I can roll it out, though.
From Burleson, Texas to Alphaba, where's Burleson at?
It's in Texas.
Burleson, Texas, out here, according to the panel, isn't it?
Wow, well, well, it's Pioneer, that's Prisoner Transport Service America, okay.
Maybe I need to start doing that, that makes more money than I do.
Oh, I'm sitting, I'm thinking, I ought to do that, but why don't y'all, you're gonna have to do it?
What you gotta do, have a better change, and a big ticket by, you get away.
So we pay an even extra postage on their sticking checks, because we have to...
Is this Prisoner Transport America?
They're horrible.
Can you just take it off the real license?
I don't know, but think about that, minus certified postage, I never thought about that.
From Burleson County, Texas, Caldwell, Texas.
I don't know if it gets on somebody else's desk that doesn't know what to do with them.
Well, that's, that's going to Nashville, Tennessee, though, right?
And they are very grumpy people when they call and they demand it like right then, "No, send it out today." Well, you gotta send MS stuff out, David, there's a little few things we gotta do.
But I'm sort of thinking, I'm mailing in, go get them for that price, we can split that money.
How time, so I'm in the back to pick up?
Yeah, I know, it's that, there's a different color.
I don't know, who signed up there?
Put a little water bowl back there for me, that'd be all right.
You what?
Put a water bowl back there for me.
Worth the trouble they had, both of them, because they didn't have some...
21.
521.
Play a long time.
Yeah, I've got, think of that, that makes money. Soon as you step in, we can get theirs back, I'm pretty sure. I wonder how much they'd make, I never thought that, well, they have full peoples, all of them stuck in the United States and everything else, yeah.
Pull inside a room, just open the door, and they gotta go to the bathroom.
Oh, it wouldn't take much, we just put a funnel back there, a little other, trapdoor, trapdoor. So it's Northwest Dakota deal, grab Simron County, is that what that is?
Yes. Whatever, is that a room? Better hurry up.
I don't know how long it'll be.
Book, booking, I had to go to, was it Wheeler?
Wheeler, Texas.
Before I could find a room.
Even then. Canada, Mexico's not that far away, is it?
Well, Wheeler's only like 20 minutes or something.
No, I, I just saw that, that's okay.
You just crossing the Colorado, didn't you?
Ooh, I should think about that, I should have went north instead of south.
Gets you, gets you a little, little gypsy week.
Down the step there, everybody's, this is the one with this one.
Have them, they're all at the same...
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I wonder if you can negotiate, say, you pay a fair market value, you negotiate, it might be like, hey, you're paying us $1,000.
They comes up for a week.
Well, you can, you won't have to throw a bid, you won't have to...
It's your land, you can negotiate it. You won't have to go through the course to get the eminent domain, pay attorney.
Yeah, remember, making the park a lot, still, what, that one house, is the one left there? Yeah, it's, it takes a while. We haven't had blanket yet.
Yeah.
I don't know, but Trump was, pay attention, talk to Kyle. Probably could go over there, a place she calls grandma's on the east side, they had a, narrow deals in the distance. Now, the old showed up about 200 yards north of that, a mile line, have you seen it? About right, I didn't tell you. Dude, every five miles, they got those. I didn't, I didn't go any farther past them than Alphaba County. And it might help the county, and I guess we're putting some kind of outdoor tax, right? It's like I tell about the wet tire, we didn't grow it up in one tire jar all the time, one thing I think about it, we all we know is oil, oil, oil. If you look at it, they probably hope they put them down there, so we know, they'll make, they'll use the money off those.
School district.
Well, hopefully, they're trying to take that away and take it down there.
Yeah, they always try to take the school money.
Yeah, ask the leader about Harper County.
What I did miss?
They can come back.
No, I... Toby in Charlotte, though.
They'll need it if that's, yeah. Start dog, Jay, what?
They decided it was too much money.
They want three of them.
Well, does anybody else in the county want to clean? Pick a bag, help that. Hey, they're done, you might as well go ahead, back to that and get them done.
Okay, I do that.
It's what we were after.
I move we stepped in bid.
Second.
All in favor?
Good looking out there.
Aye.
I guess I'm gonna be yelling. That's real similar to Burlington, isn't it? Really.
They've got quite the rollover structure, don't they?
Oh, they do.
One of the best in the industry.
Our rescue truck is the only mistake we made, we didn't put big enough engine in it, all that weight on it.
Yeah, they're good trucks.
It's equipped.
And they're built right up here, you can get parts for them, they'll work on.
That's right.
That's a lot of it.
They do quality work.
It's not that far away, no, and they'll, they'll come down here.
Yeah, they would make work well with this.
There's spots where these tabbies are.
Oh, yeah, we got, yeah.
Sign those. Sometimes you just need the initial, you don't need to sign, and then I'll get a copy of the P.O., I'll send it back with them and with all those papers.
26. 9 weeks out on that. I missed clout. Sure, I know, there you go.
They got, they got hit pretty hard for trucks after all, after the rain fired from that start.
I'm sure, probably have, yeah. I'm just glad somebody in this county had forefart, forethought, not fart, to, the old field tales, passive sale.
Witch cutter, Toby.
Oh, wait, might have been you, to pass those sales taxes.
Did you get forefarted? Where was all...
We have tabs.
You have one?
No, there's several more tabs, not the, not the hard tabs, the little...
That's right, and where it's close, they're all built on their buildings. They got too small, Alien's gonna go out on bids for a building, right?
Yeah, that's it.
It's a nice cap.
They just want you to miss out.
I mean, we trust, we have to, push them out of the bar, let's get them, see if we can push them into straighter, jumpstart or whatever.
And this is the very bottom of that one?
And this will be foresight and vision.
Initial, get a lot of them here.
Do you guys have good, you know, good equipment in that house?
Oh, you got that.
And then they gather some more in the back, then.
You get done better for it, healthy.
Yeah, I like that rubber band, that'd be a good one.
It's a good one, isn't it?
You want to come down, help Jay down there, tell him on the sign? See, it only took a second.
Put back on the postscript.
Well, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't, I haven't looked into it, but I usually just have someone.
That one has to be different.
Yeah, when Jay got their bread, they wouldn't, Walt, let the regular wear and show it to them, I said, "Dang, Walt, let's go drive that thing around." I told them to drive it.
No, she'll suck. Yeah, I'll memorize it mostly, all the stuff with them.
I hope we don't have, they like how we...
I'd have to go all out on them, is there a spot to sign or anything?
There's no way to fight that stuff, now we have...
Yeah, I mean, so we don't have canes, we don't have holdups, because if you try to ... I think they were on their front end, and I said, "Hey, we're..." But I apparently... Yeah, they always try to take the school money.
Does that mean? Yeah, ask the leader about Harper County.
Toby in Cardiff though.
They'll need it if that's, yeah. Start down, tell you what.
They decided it was too much money.
They want three of them.
Well, does anybody else in the county want a thing, pick a bat off that? Hey, start down, you might as well go ahead and back that again, get it done.
Okay, I do that.
It's what we were after.
I move we step to bed.
Second.
All favor.
Good looking out there.
Aye.
It's not gonna be yellow though. That real family of the Burlington did it.
Yeah.
That good idea.
They are.
Really.
They've got quite the rollover structure, don't they?
Oh, they do.
One of the best in the industry.
Our rescue truck is the only mistake we made, we didn't put big enough engine in it, with all that weight on it.
Yeah, they're good trucks.
It's equipped.
And they're built right up here, you can get parts for them, they'll work on.
That's right.
That's a lot of it.
They do quality.
It's not that far away, no, and they'll, they'll come down here.
Yeah, they would, they'd work well with us.
There's spots where these tabs are.
Oh, yeah.
Sign those.
Yep.
Somehow we just need the initials, we don't, we need to sign and, but I'll get a copy of the P O, I'll send it back with them and with all those papers.
I miss Cloud.
Sure, I'm a little.
They got, they got hit pretty hard for trucks after all this, after the Ray fire and when that started.
I'm sure probably, yeah, I'm just glad somebody in this county had fore fart, fore thought, not fart, to, the oil field here, let's pass the sale.
Which better.
Huh?
Which better, Toby.
Oh, wait, might have been you, to pass those sales taxes.
Did you get the four fart and where was all the?
No, there's several more tabs, not the, not the hard tabs, the little.
That's the reason, please, they're all going to, they're building, they got too small, Alien's gonna go out on bids for a building, right?
Yeah, that's it.
They just want you to miss out.
Push it by the border, let's get them, see if we push them in the straighter, jump starter or whatever.
And miss the very bottom of that one?
Before sight and vision.
Initial, yeah, you lot in here.
Do you guys have good, you know, good equipment in that house?
Oh, you already got that.
And then they gather some more in the back then.
You get done better before it helps you. Yeah, I like that rubber band, that'd be a good one.
It's a good one, isn't it?
Try to come down, help Jay down there, sign. See if it's got something.
Put it back on the post.
Well, I don't know, I didn't, I looked into it, but I usually just has one.
Yeah, when Jet got their bread, they went, uh, Walt, let's bring a little air and show it to them, I said, dang Walt, let's go drive that thing around, tell them to drive it.
No, she'll suck, she'll suck.
I'll present most of all the stuff with them. I hope we don't have, they like all that.
Is there a spot to sign or anything?
There's no way to fight that stuff, now we have.
I have, because we don't have canes, I have cold milk, because it's, I don't know all that. Not that they were on there, so I said, hey, we're, apparently.
finer, didn't you work?
No, no, if there's not a spot to sign, I'll just fill out the rest of them. They usually just want to know the P O numbers, when we, when our deadline is and all that stuff, most of the time.
Did just him have to sign or anybody else?
All right, Doug, you're fifty.
All right, I'm set.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You may.
Appreciate you.
You're welcome, gentlemen.
Thanks, sir.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Derek.
It's not, not hard to take care of firemen for me.
No, it's done.
Yeah, I see why you're sitting back there, sitting.
That's everything else.
Some last, whoever knows they're asleep.
He's got his favorite spot. Nancy got by, had a pill, you getting there?
Me just. Little buck on the lawn, duck over the little wall.
Hey, seven fifty-one bucks a transport, didn't it?
I can't know it, though.
From Burleson, Texas to Alphabell, where's Burleson at?
It's in Texas.
Burleson, Texas, who, out here, more than paying that, isn't it?
Well, 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 it's Pioneer, that's Prison and Transport Service of America, okay.
Maybe I need to start doing that, that makes more money than I do.
Oh, I'm sitting, I'm thinking I'd do that, but I, why don't y'all, you're gonna have to do it.
What you gotta do, have a better change and a big, thick a pipe, so you get away.
So we pay an even extra postage on their sticking checks, because we have had to.
Prison and Transport of America, can you just take it off the rail, like, like?
Oh, but think about that, minus certified postage, I think, what about that?
From Burleson County, Texas, Caldwell, Texas.
I don't know if it gets on somebody else's desk that doesn't know what to do with them.
Well, that's, that's going to Nashville, Tennessee, though, right?
And they are very grumpy people when they call and, they demand it like right then, no, send it out today, well, you gotta send them this, uh, affidavit, there's a little few things we gotta do.
But I'm sort of saying, I'm mailing it in, go get them for that price, we can split that money.
How time, thumb in the back of the pickup?
Yeah, I know it's that, there's a different color.
Put a little water bowl back there for me, that'd be all right.
Do what?
Put a water bowl back there for me.
Where the trouble they had, both of them, because they have some.
Twenty-first.
Five twenty-one.
By a long time.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get, that makes a living. We could get turned back, I'm pretty sure. I wonder how much the people make, I never thought that, where they have all people's, all of the United States and everything else, yeah.
Four on the side of rooms, open the door, and they gotta go to the bathroom.
I don't want to take much, we just put a funnel back there, a little other, trap door, trap door. So it's Northwest Dakota deal, throughout Simron County, is that what that is?
Yes. You have a saddle room, better hurry up.
I don't know how long it'll be.
There, booking, I gotta go to, was it Wheeler?
Wheeler, Ty, hell.
Before I can find a room.
Even then. Town in Mexico's not that far away, is it?
Well, Wheeler's only like twenty minutes, so I don't think so.
No, I, I just saw that, that's okay.
You just crossing the Colorado, didn't you?
Oh, I didn't think about that, it should have went north, it says south.
Gets you, gets you a little, a little chewy.
Down the step, everybody's, this is the one with this one.
Yeah, Jay thought our church was really nice, they liked that glass with ground up in ten bar.
Oh, man, it, it is nice, I've never been in there before. It's on the ground floor, that's, that's the big.
And there's no basement.
What do you do if it's storming, you get down under your knees and?
Pray.
Pray.
That's what most of us do, five twenty-one, right?
That church across the street has a basement, and the Baptist church, three blocks away, has a basement.
All the other churches don't want to pray as hard.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true, but.
Jay has a full-time job praying for Toby and I every week.
Those two vehicles, those two buildings, we're separately tied together, you know, we built the fellowship hall first. I should have stayed, gonna have Carol Shepherd's, now he's birthday there, you couldn't, you're about the same age, aren't you?
You ever heard of the shooting in the Goyden, give more to me.
I haven't said, Jay, I couldn't, I probably figured it was okay, it's been a long, long, hard week last week.
I doubt if it is, I'm in my meeting, but I doubt if it is, is, are you there at the shop now? Okay, yeah, if it's empty, holler if you have any problem, or if, somebody, I'll go and get you some help. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
All favor.
Aye.
Blanket, bird's door.
She's getting that.
File.
More for that.
Yeah, District one and two.
And three.
Andrew. Jay, don't sign the top two, the top two are the sheriffs, the rest of them are county generals, mess attendant, Jet, Alien.
These are sheriffs. And these are all ambulances?
Yeah, we have the ambulance.
So we get, they do acknowledge, Jay.
You can just acknowledge those two and sign the top of the other ones.
Burlington, call up in the morning.
I'll do the shuffle here.
Nice days, this week's, in its last day, it's cool, or somebody this week, God, gee, they're going to school, they go forever.
I'm wrong, they're a week out there. Huh? Wrong, it's a week longer than everybody else.
Yeah, they feel operated all day and shut it out.
I mean, it's nice for the people that wanted to be able to take graduation and get great stuff for other schools and then still have.
Right.
They're still going to school, Andy.
I do that one.
They're still going to school in Edmond.
Yeah.
And will be probably till, like, close to the first, because of the strike.
I did it on first, though, last Tuesday, that's the first time I was standing right here and talking before O H P, and I went in trouble. Yet, huh, yet, I didn't, you know, I didn't get in trouble down there at all, I was getting my mouth pretty quiet. That's how I stay out of trouble. I just put myself, I don't, to explain to the, one of the railroad guys, I've met many more, I've met Alien a lot, and I'm just as close to that train as I am standing right here in here, I'll ride away, you know, please, right now, just don't give a crap, you know, that railroad guy's the one that's on their, on their ride away at all.
Oh, no, she changed, she changed.
No, she hasn't changed, huh? It's the same in the face.
Yep.
Just got, got more eggs to her. Yeah. Okay, like that church building, that's quite a fight, you know, it's a base building, a ten bar can't be a church, man, we have folks that made out of brick and everything else, so, we had quite a fight, but we, we won, we built it.
Where does that add to?
In Elliot.
You could do like EMS didn't just have a metal building, then just, or even A C Sheriffs did, had a metal building, just put brick on the outside of it.
Yeah, false front.
I move we step to blanket.
Aye.
All favor.
Aye.
Those cars are from the.
When I went, when I went down, me and my nephew went to Louisiana for Sugar Bowl when I was even playing, Jason White, the quarterback, whatever. You can see it's big old bill, I think it's building way down there, damn, I won't tell them to stop, I said, this church, well, it was big, it was false front, it was metal.
In their service area.
Yeah, their district duty.
Yeah, but no charge either, no money.
Split that three ways.
Yeah, we split that three ways, always. Thirteen twenty-five eleven. Hmm, it's right down here, but it kills the curve.
Is that a, run a new line to, Justin Landis' house?
No, it's not that.
No, they already have a two, so they're, it's on the east side.
Yeah, it's on the east side.
Burn man.
I'm fine leaving it off.
Me too. Do what? Me too.
Said, I'm fine with leaving it off, he said, I said, I'm fine with leaving it off, and he said, me too, you said it rang up there.
It rang, um, spot, yep, all, all favor.
Aye.
All that, all that, that one.
Probably property access even predicted two for the east half, the southwest quarter at fifteen twenty-five twelve to remove backfilling debris for proper load to the bridge.
And also down both of them.
The second one, I don't have signature on it, so.
Okay, uh, the first.
The first one we have here.
Okay, the first one we got.
That's, this is actually the one that wasn't on the agenda last time.
That was on the agenda last?
Was not.
Okay. Okay, that one's signed.
Yeah.
The other one we don't have signature for yet.
Yeah, it's probably that one.
Or that's gonna be swan.
There you go.
That's just a plant, right?
This, yep.
Station down there, any alien?
No, Alien.
Oh.
Did we have a motion on the?
I'll make it.
Check it. All favor.
Aye.
And then the second one?
The second one, we got our table.
It's table, because there's no bank sign.
I move we table it for active signature, give it signed.
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Contract for EMS, Helene Stacey, which we Rick Scott, discussion and how about?
I wonder if that's what one of anybody else would show up for this.
Uh, he was up here earlier.
Yeah.
Robson's up here earlier.
Oh, okay. Don't you sit down with Alien.
Robson says Alien.
What's Alien, man?
Oh, they, we, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got off the line.
You're all right, you're all right.
I'm so sorry, I'm like, what? There's two copies here, that's kind of towards the back where you need to sign.
I'm thinking that, okay.
I am so sorry, I.
Well, see, I heard this building in Elliot, they want soundproof, they want soundproof walls because of the train, I said, no, they can just, uh-huh. That people live right next to tracks, sleep right through it.
Sleep with trains, my whole life, told you I hear it.
Yeah, you don't, you did, you were, you were pretty close to it.
Two different deals here or something.
That's just where you need to sign, there's two, two copies, I'll send, both copies to them, and then they'll send it back, sign, send one copy back, sign to us.
Yeah, she's open, everything in front of it, you don't gotta sign, you just gotta sign these, from there on, see?
Yeah, get right there, the owner.
Almost as close as the G D trip.
Yeah, almost, yeah. Well, Nina don't live that far.
There are only one signature on each deal, correct?
Yes, yes.
Well, Nina don't live that far from it, she don't, you sleep right through it, don't you?
She misses, her house is soundproof.
Now, I'm sure in the wintertime, she hears it more.
Window in the summer, and it, I had that South bedroom right by the rail, so I sleep right through it.
Load, accept the contract.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Now you're, now it's just not really for me.
Agreement of the provision.
What, we got table last week, right?
With advanced correctional healthcare incorporated in Alphabell County. It is a deal, we, I called Dusty Fertz on, and I emailed it to him, and he said, this is something that's kind of new, the last two or three years, a lot of counties don't do it, but if you can fund it, if anything happens.
Right.
This company takes over and we don't have to worry about chasing anything down, they cover us.
For getting sued for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Or five million, or ten million.
Yeah.
I'm making most, I'm making most of it.
Check it.
Okay.
I know we had this. Shall I speak and say all favor?
Do what?
I said, shall I speak and say all favor while you're signing?
All favor.
I'm down with forty, I just say aye.
As long as we hit the aye, that's all.
That's right. Boy, it's gonna look pretty to me.
No. You guys will sign somewhere on that top sheet, the rest of it are his specs, he had company. Oh, I can't remember, I started with the D.
Oh, what?
Desk tab, but there's a plan that I just printed out.
It should be on here, or something.
That printed the plans out from, I don't know, it might be on there.
Move to the up.
Rob.
Oh, I'll do it.
We get, sign the back, baby.
No, just sign all the front page saying that everything looks all right on the specs and.
Down at the bottom here?
Yeah. I'll leave that out there, I think she got it, so, if not, no, no signature, yeah, I think she sent me an O K on it. O K, I'll write the O K.
Yeah, that'll.
Rob said he got pretty detailed on it, 'cause he said he was a detailed person, so.
I can tell, these are doors, you're right, I'm right, so I'm saying, here, here, probably right, stairs, excellent. Rob done, he done this, he's done some plans before, I can tell you that much.
Rest of the Lord only knows they needed.
Yeah, can't remember what it was like.
Oh, the city office is gonna be in the building too?
Six hundred and some.
Yeah.
Six hundred.
So.
Six hundred forty-eight dollars for the other plans.
Really?
Which is, so, city, city audit, okay.
Not too bad.
No, not bad.
But they'll be insured, gonna be insured by the county on it.
Do what?
City office will be insured by the county, they won't, we insure these buildings. I didn't really do it, but Rob does before, haven't he?
I know they have, come on.
Oh, exactly.
I know they should, some plans that we have on file, we can.
Not that one, I don't, I don't know what those are, the doors.
You should have started drawing all your plans up.
They're beautiful jobs.
Yeah.
Well, Rob draw them, but these guys went from off his deal, yeah, twelve by fourteen doors, good. Three by ten doors, twelve by ten doors don't work too good anymore. Let's say, what's in my wages? You don't say the name, well, that's something.
Yeah, it's like the D S, they're our new vendor.
I learned this when I got, I'm confused, how you do it?
That's a good way to do it, though.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Seismic permit request for T G S, D A S, N O P E C, Geophysical Companies of Alphabell County.
So it's two copies, yeah, gotta keep them out there a month.
This is May.
Side.
Close.
June twenty-second.
Yeah, this is May, you gotta keep them out there a month, in June.
Okay. I'm a second with it, more than a month till June twenty.
So, so you, uh, award this.
Keep one here.
Today's the twenty-first, so.
Just barely, it's quarter of May, looks like.
Yep.
Oh.
Mostly.
What I'm saying is.
I mean, Wednesday.
It should be open till June, is that what you're thinking?
She said they do them differently, they did before, you know, they have a helicopter.
It doesn't matter, it's cleaner if you do, and they'll be here that Mon, or actually, it's, yeah, that Monday to open them, if they accept them, then, then, we put the P O on, we encumber it, but if, if we don't, that's a cash account, all their balances are automatically over.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm thinking that's how it's gonna be, we're going on Ben, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I'm like, what?
Yeah, you got, yeah, I was messed up, I mean, what? We opened them before, that's what we did, yeah, okay.
I'm looking, we accept seismic permit, I'll second it.
You know, it's getting all money, don't you?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Do you want Nancy's number on here, or do you want your number on here, husband's number?
Probably get, get better for her, Dan.
I was thinking, number.
Jay did, and, and, stand.
No, I was thinking, we, we're accepting, I'm sorry.
No, just, that's closing.
You're right, June twenty-second.
Any other thing, Ben, move we here.
I'll second that, baby.